Okay, Sean, just let me know Teresa, Brendan and John, that's who we're missing, but I have a forearm actually, so.
Okay.
It's not seven yet, but.
Nancy, I'm here. Happy New Year.
Oh, hi, John. Thank you.
And Sean, we're good. We are, we are live, just so you guys know.
Okay, thank you. That's an awesome chair, John.
Oh, thank you, Margaret.
I love it. Wow, that's like, needs to be in an executive office somewhere or something.
Once upon a time.
There you go. It's almost like you would have to pay admission to get to see somebody in a chair like that. I like it. Or a really good movie.
Somebody wants my opinion, normally they have to pay for it.
All right. I like it. That's awesome. Do you have a sofa that goes with it somewhere in the office?
Uh, no, not in the office.
Oh, I was gonna say, that looks like, like it would need a counterpart of like, I am in this chair, here's your sofa, you may sit there. Sounds like it. It's nice. I like it a lot. Have to see what I can do. I have an old wooden one, so, you know.
All credit goes to Debbie. I had nothing to do with it. All credit goes to my wife, Debbie.
I love it. Well, tell her she did good, and the next time I'm looking for something, I'm gonna call her. She has nice taste.
Will do. Thanks.
Okay, 7:00 PM, I'm going to start the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order of Monday, January 11th, the Board of Ed Work Session. I ask you all to please stand for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to all of you. We're gonna begin tonight with our superintendent's update, so Mr. Day, take it away.
All right, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Have, not surprisingly, some updates, all things COVID. So on the exciting front, as you know, we were just in the midst of Phase 1A, which were all of our healthcare workers. We were excited to receive permission from the state to have our school nurses start to get vaccinated, so they went last week, late last week, got pictures, I sent them to you also. It was a great, exciting way to end last week. Phase 1B started today. We just found out this weekend. Phase B consists of education workers. So of course, that sense of flurry around CCSD and the state. So what I wanted to just provide the board and our community with is just a little bit of reality, just to make sure that we're managing expectations. So first, just according to Governor Cuomo, there's still about a million doses needed for Phase 1A, just to get all of our healthcare workers vaccinated. So still a million doses needed as of last week for 1A. In Phase 1B, there are 3.2 million New Yorkers that qualify under Phase 1B. That's 1.4 million New Yorkers who are 75 and older, 207,000 first responders, 870,000 education workers, and 200,000 public safety and public transit employees. So that's constituting the 3.2 million that fall under 1B. New York currently receives about 300,000 doses per week. So do the math. I already did it for you, so I won't have anyone buzz in. But at the current rate, if we were to continue to receive 300,000 doses per week, and to plow through the 4.2 million who would qualify under Phase 1 and Phase 1A and 1B, it would take approximately 14 weeks for us to have enough vaccinations for those in Phase 1A and 1B. So that isn't to say we aren't super excited. It's just to make sure that people aren't thinking that by Saturday, all of our education workers are gonna be vaccinated should they choose to do so. So exciting news, and I just wanted to make sure that we understand how this process works, coming down from federal, who's distributing on a proportional basis to the states. And then we in turn distribute proportionally to those different subgroups that we talked about, the 75 and older, the healthcare workers, the education workers. And Governor Cuomo was very clear that there isn't anyone that trumps another within that category. So if there's 12% police first responders, they would get 12% of the 300,000 doses. If there's 15% education workers, they would get 15% of the doses available. So bit of exciting news there, but wanted to provide the most current information. Also, last week, we sent out a survey to our parents, just to see, should we fall in a red, yellow, or orange zone as a Cornwall family? Would we even have the numbers of parents who would consent to have their child COVID tested, which is one of the requirements, should you fall in one of those zones? So for example, if you fall within an orange zone, you would have to have about approximately 20% of your population tested to show that your rates within your school district are lower than the broader community. So we figured, if we don't even have that 20%, we're not even gonna develop a plan to have that done. So we wanted to just get a pulse check on the community to see, even if we have the numbers, should we go down that route? So our community is great about responding to the information that we need. There were approximately 1,200 responses. It was amazing when Megan sent it out, I was, I think, within five minutes, there were hundreds of responses. So this is, this is something top of mind to a lot of our students and families. The most important nugget out of that data is that we do have approximately 650 families that have said they would have their student tested in order for us to remain in-person instruction. So again, that's a data point. That's not forecasting what we're gonna do. I just didn't want us doing any hard work unnecessarily if we don't even have a percentage of our population agreeing to be tested. So luckily, we're not in a zone. My prediction is we will not fall in a zone. Cornwall is doing great with regards to following safety protocols. Some of our neighbors have, have different circumstances, much denser populations, much closer and dense housing. We just don't have that necessarily here in Cornwall. So just wanted to provide some context for why we sent out that survey last week. Any questions on the vaccine or the survey front from the board? Anything I missed, Megan?
Sorry, I just made it. Um, no, I mean, and we got a lot of good side conversations with families that were just asking follow-up questions. You know, a lot of them, we really can't answer just yet because we're still waiting for a lot of guidance from the Department of Health. You know, where would we test? How would we test? How often? So right now, the general consensus would be that we would be able to do saliva, if we could, in fact, do that. And in terms of if it would be private, if it would be at like a clinic-based, or if it would be onsite, that's yet to be determined based on the feedback we get from how the, how the Department of Health can partner with us.
One question, Terry, just as a follow-up. So you, you mentioned 14 weeks. So doing my, my quick Google Calendar math, so that's April 19th. And that, that is, you know, worthy perspective, because I think you're right. The inclination is to think it's gonna happen very quickly. Now, has there been any, any word either from the governor or from Orange County Health as to how that will affect, once we hit, let's say we hit April 19th and every education worker is vaccinated, how that could potentially impact school policy as it pertains to, you know, opening?
A great question. So a few data points that we're looking at very closely is to, to achieve kind of herd immunity, we need to hit approximately 75, 70% as a New York family. So all across New York, we need at least 70% agreeing and getting vaccinated. How quickly that happens is, wanna inform a lot of what we do for next year is one data point. Two, and we're still waiting for this answer, and you know, I haven't held back my opinion, but there's a question out there that if our, if any of our family members, if any of our teachers or any of our staff received both doses of the vaccine, in my opinion, they should be unquarantinedable. That's not a Webster dictionary word, but if you are vaccinated and have done that according to protocols, there shouldn't be a call to that classroom or what have you, just say, ex-teacher got vaccinated. There was a case in her classroom. In my opinion, if you have the vaccine, that teacher would not have to go out, which is some of our concern at the high school level and some other places. So that's another question that we have out there is, as those doses go up, does our quarantine population shrink, which is impacting businesses, school districts, and the like? So those are, those are questions that we have at this, at this time.
Okay, Terry. Oh, go ahead, Nina. Sorry.
Um, do we have a sense with the, you know, the current way, I guess, the president-elect is talking about releasing vaccines and, and what we know about what New York's supposed to get as to, you know, on the assumption that, you know, anybody that were to take it, were to receive it, when we would hit that 70%?
Uh, no, he's, he, he painted that, that picture that I painted on Friday with regards to how long it would take for us to get through 1B. So he's also really hopeful that with some of the moves that the administration-elect has put on the table, one of those is not holding back the, the doses. So if, if our folks who got dose one are ready to go, get them their, their second dose, don't hold them back. So that's one thing that he's very confident about. He's also holding out hope that the production and just distribution is gonna increase. So as we get better and better at figuring out how to distribute the vaccine, that that supply should increase, as well as other groups gain approval for the vaccine. So no definitive timeline. I know Fauci has his remarks that it would take at least till the end of the summer to reach that threshold, and that's if we were humming on all cylinders. But that's been the only benchmark that I've been, I've read thus far.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Okay, Terry, anything else?
Uh, that's it. Just hold tight on, you're not gonna have, unfortunately Harvey's not gonna have a grand reveal by way of budget. We watched the state of the state, and unfortunately, our crystal ball says that the budget's gonna be delayed from the governor, so ask for your patience as we work our numbers in the district. But remember, there's always gonna be that question of state aid and that trickle-down effect to Cornwall. So we'll keep you updated, but please don't hold your breath.
Okay, thank you. Um, just very quickly, Sean, you're still with us? Teresa got kicked off, I think she said, or she dropped off, and she hasn't been able to get back in. So I don't know if you can help her, that would be appreciated. Okay, so we're gonna move to committee reports. Are there any committees that have anything to report? Larry, go ahead.
A quick little update from our last meeting. After our last meeting, I requested CSR to forward the final version of the Building Edition Survey to us by January 15th. They, at that time, agreed that they would do it. I have an email out to them and to confirm that, and I have not heard, but.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other committees? I'm not sure if anyone has met since our last meeting, but anybody have an update right now? Okay, moving along, recognition of visitors. There were no public comments submitted for this meeting, so we're gonna move along to the consent agenda. And so the, the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. We actually only have one item on the consent agenda, so there is no need to ask if anyone wants to pull off an item since there's only one item, and that would be item number two. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, and that would be item two, which is all personnel actions. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. And second, okay, all in favor, Louis?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Brendan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, new business, non-consent items. The first, number one, is analyst agreement resolution. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that in accordance with an impartial hearing for student ID 134812, the Board of Education does hereby approve the agreement with Joy Brewster's board-certified behavior analyst to provide independent functional behavioral assessment services for said student. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
The second?
Check it.
And any discussion? Okay, roll call. Louis?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Brendan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carried. Anderson Center Agreement Resolution, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education does hereby approve the contract and agreement with the Anderson Center for Autism and Out-of-District Educational Provider servicing various special needs students for the 2020-21 school year. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All right, roll call.
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Brendan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carried. OC and AC settlement resolution. Whereas the Board of Education, the Cornwall Central School District has reviewed the terms of settlement agreements with the parents of two special education students, each dated January 7th, 2021, in executive session. And whereas the settlement agreements will resolve a pending due process complaint and a threatened due process complaint, it is in the best interest of the students and the school district, therefore be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education hereby resolves the settlement agreements and authorizes the Superintendent of Schools or is designated to take the necessary steps to implement the settlement agreements. Do I have a motion?
You'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Nancy, just a question, John?
Go ahead.
For, for Terry, I guess, or Megan. I noticed that this issue arose back in August, and here we are now in January. Is this, that kind of latency between the issue and resolution? I'm glad that we have a favorable settlement here. This is, this is exactly what you guys are supposed to do, and I appreciate that. Thank you for that. But I'm just trying to understand the, the timing. Is it being affected by COVID? I noticed that the documents were dated back in, I think, November, and now we're finally getting it here in January before the board. So can you speak a little bit about the timing of it all?
Uh, from my conversations on this case, there was a very productive conversation with the parents and determining what's gonna be best for, for their children. So as you know, as you have kind of these back and forth and assemble the CSC and, and the like, it can take some time. So there's really no COVID-related delay. I think that, from my perspective, that this was a productive conversation between the district and the parents. There were additional layers. I don't know if you recall that there were also kind of things going on in New York and the nation as it relates to COVID and special education. So that's another layer to keep in mind that, that, that provided additional complexity for, for particular cases.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, roll call. Louis?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Larry? Larry?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you, Teresa? Teresa?
Aye.
Thank you. Brendan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. All right, number four, DWOT Contract Resolution, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education does hereby approve the contract agreement with Pediatric Occupational Therapy Solutions of Chester, New York, and out-of-district educational provider servicing student DW for the 2020-21 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Nina. Um, any discussion? All right, roll call. Louis?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Brendan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. DWPT Contract Resolution, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education does hereby approve the contract agreement with Moveability Physical Therapy of Chester, New York, and out-of-district educational provider servicing student DW for the 2020-21 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion on that?
Nancy, one, oh, go ahead. Just one really small detail. The, the date is not filled in throughout the contract as it is on the other contracts. It's filled in at the end with the signature, but, you know, agreement this blank day of January, it's left blank, you know, just for dotting the Ts and crossing the Is there. Or did I, I said that wrong? Dotting the, you don't dot T's.
Found it good to me.
Yeah, see, that's it.
All right, thank you, Brendan. That'll, that'll be corrected. Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, roll call. Louis?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Aye.
Brendan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Nina?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, well, believe it or not, we're up to closing comments from the Board of Ed. And we will start with Matt.
Um, great.
How about that, Matt?
Well, I'll make it short and sweet. Terry, thank you for your update. Nancy, thank you for your efficiency running this meeting tonight. That's all I got.
Thank you, Matt. Larry, you're up.
Well, again, not much. I appreciate Terry's updates that we get periodically. I also want to congratulate Terry. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Teresa?
Uh, this is an incredible evening. I wanna thank you, I wanna thank the cabinet, and, and especially Terry, because I think the community at large has kept well, very well informed, and that's so important right now. It's not always, it, sometimes it's, it's what you don't hear, and I really don't hear complaints. And I myself, I'm very pleased with the amount of information I get. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Brendan?
Yeah, uh, thank you to Terry, Megan, Harvey, whoever was the, the driving force behind the questionnaire. I thought that was a great move, you know, just to be ready in case we have to move. We, we know what our options are. Great update, Terry. Thanks for the continued flow of good information, and I hope everybody had a great New Year and is, is shaking off the rust from, hopefully, what was two weeks of sitting around not doing too much. So glad to be back at it.
Thank you, Brendan. John?
So Happy New Year to all. I think the year has started off a lot better than last year ended. There's so much promise that, I know that it's easy to get down on things that we see and hear, but in our neck of the world that I'm looking at are my little lens into Cornwall. I am very excited for what we have in store for the upcoming year. My hat's off to the administration to getting us this far. I can't believe we're already in two, in 2021. And the end of COVID hopefully is just around the corner. So I, I thank everyone for hanging in there, and I'm looking so much to the future. I, I, I just can't tell you all enough. So thank you, Terry. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Harvey. And thank you, Board and Cornwall, for, for the year ahead. I know it's gonna be better than the last. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Margaret?
Um, yeah, ditto to what everybody said so far. Um, I just wanted to throw out the PSA, which is in regards to COVID and being informed. I was just thinking about things, you know, to, to keep everybody on track, including myself specifically. And that if you haven't signed up for the state's COVID tracker yet, if you go to the New York State, you can sign up for their COVID tracker, and that's a good way for the state to keep getting data on how the whole thing is progressing. There's also a daily email that you can get, if you haven't heard of that yet, from, again, the state of New York that tells you the update on vaccines and where, who and where is eligible to get them at what time. And then if you do get a vaccine, there's another form to fill out just kind of to, because this is such a new thing, to kind of collect data on any kind of side effects or any kind of issues that are alongside. So I have a friend from college who's a big-time epidemiologist, and she's very, very, you know, they, they really use the data from these things. So the more that we can do to help, you know, provide data for this, that, you know, overall, I think everybody will, will benefit. So that was my little PSA. Happy New Year, everybody. Hope you're all doing well.
Thank you, Margaret. Nina?
Um, hi, Happy New Year to everyone. Nice to have a, a fresh start. I don't know if this was already done, but Nancy, you were kind enough to let us know in December that the longtime internal auditor for the, the district, Mark, Joan McHugh, had passed away. So I just wanted to say, you know, condolences to, to her family. And, you know, she, she served the district very well for so many years, so it was very sad to hear of her passing. I'd like to thank Terry and Harvey and Megan and, and all the stakeholders, the teachers, the students, the parents. You know, getting through 2020 was, you know, was a Herculean effort. It was, it really took quite a bit. So I think it's really encouraging to hear that we're starting to see vaccines getting out there and, you know, getting to the healthcare providers, and that we're gonna start to see them soon. And, you know, that there's, there's, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a train. So I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with all that, and, you know, wishing everybody all the best for the, the upcoming year.
Thank you, Nina. Louis?
Happy New Year to all. It's great to see everybody again. It seems as if we all went, gotten through the holidays unscathed. Happy New Year to all. It's great to see everybody again. It seems as if we all went, gotten through the holidays unscathed. We're all here and present. That's a good thing. I know it was difficult shaking off the rust myself, Brendan. I did have the two weeks off, which is unusual. So it was a few cobwebs, you know, between my ears when it was time to get rolling again, you know. That first day of work was difficult to wake up for. I know my kids personally are, are looking forward to going in person tomorrow. They're the, they're the Tuesday, Thursday cohort, and I know they're related. They can't wait to get to school, can't wait to get in, can't wait to see their friends under the, under the circumstances that they're allowed to, you know. So, you know, like everyone else has been sharing, I, I do thank, I do thank the district admin as well as Cornwall and the community, because it is, it is this community that allows this to happen, and it's, 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 you know, the efforts through everybody, through everybody's due diligence, that it allows that, that, that bit of world to occur. It allows, you know, I know it allows me to go to work. It allows, you know, you know, life to happen a bit. So I do appreciate, appreciate everybody's vigilance, and I know our numbers locally are, are a tad lower than our surrounding communities, and it's a wonderful thing. Keep up the good work, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Thank you, everybody, my board, and thank you to our central admin team, amazing job. And to every person, I think I've said this at every meeting, but every person who's involved in this district, every staff person, the parents, the kids, everybody is just doing a wonderful job. So very Happy New Year to everyone, and we hopefully are going onward and upward. Very excited to see that we are going to have Ms. Cheryl Murray Lazarus join us as the interim principal at the high school. She is someone that I worked with as a teacher a number of years ago at the Newburg, in the Newburg School District. She was an amazing teacher. I remember her very well, and I'm sure that she will do an amazing job for this district for the remaining year when Mr. Trambada leaves us, who has also done a great job. And so we're very fortunate to have had him and to have Ms. Lazarus join us at the beginning of February. So good things are happening in the district. So again, I thank everybody. Do, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Aye.
And all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you all, and have a great-